If you give us four years, you should be good. You should have a special.
They give me the option this year. I think she, we got to be two left. We're going to state tournament. He was happy with it since I'm going to take kids from last year. I'd rather don't make it. You know, not what I'm doing. Yeah, ketchup. Sure, ketchup. But I got a small game. I'm supposed to represent, so she had ketchup.
Oh, yeah.
So he'll probably make the other thing. I don't want.
So I'm sure there's a question that, right?
That's, that's not my worry.
Yeah.
Would you say that how much could?
Throw eighty-five plus in the pool. Take a, uh.
Take a sale.
No, it's a, it's a. Jacob, yeah, Jacob. So you watch his kid. Start right here. He threw one of them right at his feet. It was unbelievably good watching that.
It's getting selling.
Really?
Throw left and right. He just played against us last year, each turn.
And you see him in the middle of the night and switch hands?
Um, I didn't. I have a question. I have a question. That's every page. There's a stick on. He did a hockey glove. He should be sent to page your bureau. You have to buy a lot of fish pools. I know his fishing will be different now.
That's hard. And I mean, watch this guy. He did it right hand better and throw one hand and left hand better. Throw the other hand. And he just kind of go. Why haven't you seen this before?
It was a guy that was sucks.
Right.
Six years ago, they did that.
Was he effective?
I've never seen him throw a lot.
He didn't do it often, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was more of a.
But he did it. It's kind of like a switch hitter with a sweet average.
No, I mean, switch hitters were more often will switch.
Yeah.
It was rarely, right? Maybe this kid made me a couple times this season.
This kid is unbelievably good. Yeah, Jacob. So did you, did he show it to you?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere with his name.
He's a Spanish kid.
Yeah, we have here. Somewhere with his name.
He's a Spanish kid.
Yeah, we have here.
He's, he's, he's worse.
Yeah, Jacob, he's pretty young from Southern.
We'll see how they do this. Their young team.
Ah, that's Morgado and Yoff.
My, uh, my son, Georgia, Morgado. We must, we must go through all these things. I heard Jake Lee break your business policy yesterday.
Yeah, they're hot. He's been fun. Lots out of the line.
St. Joe's? Or some St. Joe's in Connecticut. I don't remember. Yeah, so my son said he's called a lot.
Nathan was gonna, Nathan took a gap year or capture.
Yeah, my son's been seeing him down in Panama, the family. It's a place down in Panama. Yeah, so they opened up, he's been down there. Uh, that's the big thing. Defensive. He's a, that's a big shoe.
Yeah, I saw him.
And she's been two men.
I started.
I don't know, my son was saying. He can run.
Why should you know the game?
Honestly, you shouldn't choose much. You guys can't actually.
We have, we didn't play fraud.
You should have, uh, you should probably choose much. You know what better it is?
We should have a passion. You have that.
I would piece it. I mean, honestly, they don't really, it's G D Mars. It's a little bit better. They're trying to make the Mars team.
Yeah.
It's a little swap. But swap over is very strong.
Yeah, I heard freshman was pretty good too.
I was going to say, I want to.
The philosophy of. Very well, please. Freshman was like, yeah.
I'm really trying to ask a problem, question.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's my class.
So it's changing around the freshman. It's not too easy to find a two that has. Oh, yeah. A lot of them are all right.
That's so tough.
It's a, you know, that rap, it's just too many. Can't get it.
You know, or I suppose it's, you got to keep it after a lot. Right next. You might like one or two. So I, I, I had some of the big teams twice. So I was, so I was, I was. So I was starting well.
But G D, hard.
That's actually supposed to be possible. But I would have this apparent. It's not allowed. I think on a day. That's. Just want to. I would. I would. It's. It's a kitchen. It seems really good if I see. I'm going to need it.
And. It's not doing anything. It really isn't.
Sure.
Right.
Anyway, let me, any sheet you can start? Uh, we will tomorrow. Should probably be, I mean, it's only United. Okay. I didn't know if she was like waiting for. It all changed last week, so vacation. Right. Me off winds, shall we?
He did say he would.
Okay.
Okay.
It was after I sent him an email.
It is seven o'clock. Great. We will, I'll get into order. First up on the agenda, chief, you have something to talk about congressionally directed spending?
Yes, it's the same grant you applied for last year. If you just were approved, then I can finish it off on the application. Probably get that, uh, probably this summer. That's one of the new desktops, laptops, base radio. I think it was about thirty thousand dollars. So that, this is the same grant. Kind of have done, but definitely it is Friday. So I am looking to implement a body, uh, one camera program area fields for all offices, including, uh, cruiser cams. It's, uh, it's a hundred percent grant. Actual life of this grant last year, received it. There's been other various grants out there that fit the set match. Greenland, uh, is implementing it. Stradler is American, Newmark is American. The only time that those are right now does not have it is that. I only have to try and implement them. They do a war apple. Robbie is talking to budget. They're, they're putting in. I think it's one of the first to the game here. Because there's so many manufacturers, there's many glitches. Trying to see what work, doesn't work. Done my research, talking to local chiefs that have implemented them. You know, look at the R S A, there's adopted, uh, something like that. I think it's time to implement this program. Grant is. We would like to put in for all the bells and whistles in the game. Those would be a hundred percent. Move forward as a five year grant. But at thirty months, they'll replace, uh, cameras for us and give us cameras. After sixty months, they'll give us cameras. And then after sixty months, we'll cruiser camera will replace. So we're talking, we're going to be also putting in ten years. First five years will be picked up a hundred percent as long as the grant is, uh, or whatever the grant. Exactly the same. It's a lot of one to be. Year six would be a cost to the town. And those costs, obviously with inflation, I mean, higher than what's quoted today. That, that is a lot depends on what you deal with, with bells and whistles, what is that I have here. It's hard to say what we want after, you're right now, because we more than want all of those whistles. Because we may need them, we may not. So it's hard to say that we don't need them until you start using. Such as the device is probably a firearm, you're very hard for camera that goes on. Uh, the cameras are always on, so in a stressful situation, we could pull a firearm. Last thing I'm just thinking of is how the camera can turn it on. So that's, that's just one. Things that we'll have. Is that something that we're going to add after year five? I don't know. So, um, right now, um, after year five or year six, if you are, uh, twelve thousand dollars across the town. That's if we kind of all those whistles. And it could be as high as twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Most of that is because of data retention. That's unlimited. I don't think there'll be unlimited, but we are applying for the unlimited just to see how much data we use. These things aren't just used for calls or services, used for vehicles. So it's definitely, I haven't seen one chief tell me any disadvantages. Newmark implemented the attack in September of twenty-two. We were involved in an incident that happened in the fields of, ended in Newmark. It was a situation that came up, uh, body camera actually. With an allegation, a body of camera on Newmark. So totally contradictory with the person, the allegation. So I don't see any disadvantages other than the cost. But I think to a point, the cost of the first five years is a hundred percent. We know that's being replaced in thirty months and sixty months. So you're talking a good decade of equipment that, um, year six to ten is going to be between twelve and twelve, five, thirty thousand. Uh, it could be more than fifteen, twenty thousand dollars rate with inflation. But, you know, I think at that time, you know, we can slowly work that in to the budget as we move forward. We could also do a war on for each year, put five thousand dollars away each year so you can have that. Or you can obviously look at the detailed record account that we could drop from to pay for, um, the equipment. Because it has an access to.
Is it a ten year contract?
No, it's a five year, it's a five year.
So I'm just confused as to what, what you mean by.
Well, after, after thirty months and sixty months, they release cameras to give you the updated stuff. So you're getting everything with camera at thirty months and sixty months.
Right.
So cameras probably a lot, a lot longer than five years.
Right.
That's why I say decade. Because you're going to have the original equipment first. You know, five years, you're talking about thirty months, you have cameras that need to be replaced again.
So is the cost to the town, the service, not the equipment?
Uh, the grant is going to pay for all the equipment.
Right.
You know, cruiser cameras, body cameras, all the bells and whistles, the data, the licensing, all that. There's a lot of stuff that goes along with that. And then year six, we would be responsible for what we decided we want. We may, you know, have to take the licensing, you gotta, you're gonna have to have some other storage. You know, we're getting unlimited storage now. It's a measure of hope because after the grant, a lot, it's hard to say what we're going to need with data right now. Because this is something that's new. It's going to take a little while to work out what we have. So moving forward, you know, this docking station, there's a, there's a lot of bells and whistles that goes into the estimate. Just for the, all the bells and whistles, cameras, cruisers, they're all twelve thousand dollars a piece with the cameras that go inside the cruiser. Each body camera, you know, it, it's very expensive. We're getting probably close to services and equipment with ten body cameras and four cruiser cameras. So I, I would, it's almost two hundred thousand dollars when you're ever getting the grant.
So group is going to be free first five years. It's renewal at, at year six, year, in year twelve, year sixty months. All the data services are covered.
The first five.
Five years. All the charging, everything else is covered. So this is basically a free program for us for five years. At the end of which, we would like a determination, they're going to operate the equipment and we'll figure out what we want to do going forward for both data and services or any bells and whistles at that point. If we were to determine at the end of five years, you don't want, we don't want to do this? Is there any clawback just because we're not continuing on? Okay.
Is it fifteen thousand a year or fifteen thousand in a chunk?
At, on year six, it's approximately, I said global, right now it's twelve thousand. Inflation is saying probably you got a five or ten percent every year. That's what they're saying right now. It's a quarter of the start of two thousand twenty-three. We know that the strength of the approval until next year, we wouldn't get this off the ground until summer twenty-four or even fall. It's twelve months out right now, just for cruiser cameras. Body camera, we can get with a month. But this is all pending on the grant. We could get the grant anywhere between our January and April, May. All depends on the federal records and signs of this thing. So that's still on.
Is there an option, instead of throwing all this data on the cloud, I have my own service? Is that possible?
Not for the contract, not for the company that will demand this, Axon, which is the same company that carries our tastes. But it's not an option to do tastes that we have that, um, once you're at taste, we can work on two. There are about five different manufacturers out there. Now that being said, we do a grant, we do not put the manufacturer inside of the grant. So we're not, we're not armed to any particular company. So we know that with the grant that we're putting in for all the bells and whistles, we're going to be easily go to another company next year. We have no ties, no contracts to this company, uh, for this grant. So that could be addressed. However, our agency, like I mentioned, does have body on here, uh, programs. And we guide their, their interest in their data. Some have cloud based, some have server, server, obviously have server. Some departments are just tries, we're looking at. By no means, if this is approved tonight, once we apply for the grant, we're talking about this company Axon. We could look at other companies like, you know, state police has one, then Stradler has something else. Stradler, Newmark does the same thing. Like I said, there's going to be a lot of things changing between now and the time that this grant comes out next year.
So state police, I know they have a camera system they're not real happy with. How mature is the technology? You know, see, it's, it's almost there, it's there. Uh, I know it's kind of going into question. And there seems to be quite a spectrum of quality of product.
Yeah, this is. In my opinion, the research that I've done, the company that we're looking at is top notch. Gilbert is using them. There's a lot of department, like I said, it was still, we can call your department has that, what we call fewer than half. I can't speak, you know, you know, as I say, with somebody else in other departments. Shout, they only have this for a little two months. I think over time, they're going to have an opinion on what they're carrying. I just, this, this company we're looking at just has so much to offer right now. And, um, like I said, the grant has been on the project and we went forward, you know, to our investment. And, you know, obviously we got to apply for a grant, that's what makes it viable, that's what they do.
Okay, the, uh. So I wonder, body camera is serving a couple of functions, three functions. One protects citizens. Two protects the offices, the haul charges and allegations. And concurrently protect the community, town as far as, uh, species charges and allegations.
It does many things. It's evidence, it helps you get your eyes, it helps you work vehicles. We use it for training purposes. Anything can happen with vehicles. It's something that supervises myself in review. If it's not a safe nation, I'm sure it'll be able. Obviously, we're guided by, we're going to have a standard operating procedure internally. And we're, you know, as a safety action, we're guiding that. What we can do and what you can't do for data retention, how long you have to belong to it. That is something that we're going to have to implement as we train and learn for. But all the research I've done and speaking to the chiefs of these programs, or having, looking to implement these programs. I have another one major thing regarding this transparency. Union of Safety Evidence, adoption of complaints, citizen complaints. Reduction of, um, you know, police force situations, uh, or also where a camera situations sometimes are fired. This, yes, we, this, this study is regarding gas station, uh, and camera.
So the only really negative that apparently there is potential cost at a certain time point?
Year six, this will be a cost. That twelve thousand will probably be eighteen thousand, but it's, uh, if not higher.
Is there any way we can quantify what this is safe as our first five years? It's kind of an endless question, I understand that. But your studies are returning, we can maybe document or somehow say a lot. So how is this benefiting the town? And is it, so it's five years, we've got five years of data. And it's worth, so, so we can have some concrete objective evidence saying that it is worth moving forward through subsequent years of the process.
I think the five years are going to give us a baseline on what we need. Do we need unlimited data? Probably not, you know. But I also don't want to go over a right way and get this tribe that we can, um, expect. So the grant, how is it, and not just putting it on the basis? You know, moving forward, we have five years of brand new equipment. We have no contracts at the end of the five years. And nothing says at the end of the five years, does the grant's out there with funding? If we decide, um, you know, assuming the grant's out there for different days.
What's, have you talked to the guys on the department? They read that up?
Haven't really pulled off this, to be honest with you. I did read mine today when I was doing some research. Uh, he was the chief and Don Hart, um, that the chief had no interest or put any, he was a post white offices. And he applied for the grant, uh, for body cameras officers.
Have any, have any of our guys reported cameras before?
I have one officer that works for us, Park County, retired, that was in Stradler, that was one. And, uh, an officer retired that works in Greenland. And they right now have two different types of cameras, trial basis, see what come.
Did they have cameras when you were over there?
Uh, I just thought we had cruiser cams, but over time, those will be, they'll be saved states that only have a back of trunk. Could be in that little digital, but possibly we could have body cameras, cruiser cams. So.
Any other questions? No? All right. Uh, I'll make a recommendation that we instruct T P M to apply for the, the cruiser cam.
Second.
I guess, okay.
All right.
Okay.
The team was close to it.
Thank you, chief. All right. Wind free. Let me tell you, we're sitting ready.
Now, the landing.
I think further stuff than that.
Where you wear your scooter? A little further south. Good, how are you? I think you got this. What else?
I want to go. Oh, you need to say.
Yes. So it's two things, just one, um. And this is more wild deal, like asking people who finally cleared out the land down there, cleaned up last year. A lot of people stored their kayaks and things in the community down there. No big deal, um, plenty of space for it. Um, but I know that a lot of the first responders down there said they love to pet people with their names. And they just said, please don't take your phone or number, uh, that name on it. Just gives you the best way to drag it if you want it. They're not locked up, close around. Nobody likes to find a kayak or canoe company there. Because they don't know what to do. So you don't need a register, that's not part of, that's not leaving, you're just being able to call something. So I want to put a sign down there, that's what this is. That says, hey, if you have, you know, it's purely marketing, anybody I've seen has a basket in it. But yeah, sorry. Which is if, uh, I was going to, I went online, there was a sign type of thing, like thirty seven blocks to do that. Probably, but I just wanted to have it called down off. And then they can get to hit it to attack it. So putting that on the river. And I'm just instructing Sue or the down the head, just, these are taking all the, uh, just put on there. But then the definition of by that sign, it's spring. How people miss it. Maybe it's not up, but just that whole thing. And then on the town website, on the landing page, it's about the landing. Just adding that information as a red on there to.
Is this a local town ordinance that you're courting here?
That's what's on the webpage.
Is it, is it, is it the ordinance language or is it?
I don't know that. I know, I don't know what it's created.
The only reason I ask, and, and maybe what we should do is check. Because if it's a formal ordinance, we'll have to go through a process to change an ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, which requires three public hearings. I don't think it'll be a major issue. But, uh, I'll, I'll double check on that. Just to make sure. But if it does require, um, it'll probably be the next three board meetings, we'll clear it through.
Because that's the best, far as I can go, okay? Those are the first few board meetings in town.
Yeah, and again, if, if these are, like, I don't know if these are formal, formal ordinances or not. Again, because when you change an ordinance, it's a process. But, um, yeah, otherwise I personally, I don't see any issues with this. You guys have any?
Yes, sir.
Questions, concerns? All right. Oh, okay.
We deserve, are there any, uh, pad or highs? See if you want to lock or kind of people want to lock it up.
There, there, there isn't. So the guys that store it here, carry, gave it down at all time. And it's, it's really high for the top for everybody, probably too high. So I, I, uh, I thought our boyfriend was called the Eagle Scout. So, uh, something I watched on the internet, like, you basically take four by fours, put them on the ground and make two grays. And if that's two rails, someone could easily block that, cut it out to that. I was in a debate that, well, we'll say.
You had no issues with that?
No, what, what just happens to people back in that time? Just in the woods for many years. There's these two, they're like dead down here now. And they are, that's part of the problem. But no, nobody's ever had a problem, but I'll try to put it in.
Any other questions?
Who?
Thanks. I'll look that up and I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. All right. Check H P R, the defense. Prior meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Minutes from January twenty-fourth and minutes from February twenty-first.
I want to take a little bit closer. Any changes edits?
Five hundred and twenty-four.
Tuesday, January twenty-fourth?
Yeah, page five, first paragraph, last sentence, not instruct, not cancel instructor, not instruct.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. I'm sorry, I have one more.
Page five, first paragraph.
Of which, which?
Twenty-four, uh, January.
Hold on, sorry.
It's all good.
Okay, I'm sorry, page five, one more time?
Page five, first paragraph. Last sentence, straight eagle bar from the start board.
Yes.
That's it.
Any other changes edits? Great. Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, one second.
Second by all, in favor? Aye. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, oh, that was as edited, sorry. As, as edited. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, minutes as, as drafted for Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty. Second by Jackie, all in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. Uh, we have revenue and expenses. Take a moment, if there's any questions, call them out as you see them. By the way, chief, are typically the cameras leased? I forgot to ask, or is it an outright purchase of the equipment? In other words, do we own the equipment or is it just leased equipment that they refer?
Um, they do it a couple of different ways, some, um,
You can buy or lease, I think.
Yeah, and then some companies offer the, uh, the data in the cloud base or buy your server.
Right, right.
We're still looking into that, that's why we're going on the iron and making decisions.
Just curious, I, I, I only ask because of the, you know, the other leases and unit. Clicking my head, I mean, you know, if the cameras would be leased as well.
What's the drop date for having that paperwork here?
Friday.
Friday.
Any questions about the statements of revenue and expenses as through February twenty-eighth?
Luke.
All right, that's the formal business. One item I just want to raise. After the candid form last night, probably most people aware our website went live, uh, making accusations about this board, its members, and yet from the election. Uh, in my opinion, this is, this is the worst kind of politics. Anonymous mudslinging, anonymous mudslinging. It's an inappropriate measure to win an election. This is also a clear violation of RSA six sixty-four fourteen, dealing with elections. I believe Jane Walsh, as the candidate who's benefiting from this, needs to denounce this and then demand that the website be taken down. Uh, in my opinion, if Jane doesn't take action and quietly accepts this, it speaks volumes about how she views election laws. Uh, in addition to the website, there are illegal signs that were placed around town. Uh, there's no place for this in Newfields, we are better than this. Whoever did this is pushing what I think is a distorted agenda and doesn't have the guts or the regard for our laws to respectfully participate in this, this election and are trying to do these things anonymously. Given these events, this board has a responsibility to act. And as such, I am going to make a motion to instruct our police department under RSA six sixty-four seventeen to remove these signs from around town. And if they reappear, to take them down as well.
Michael. Uh, since I'm running in this election and I'm sitting on the select board, I think it would be appropriate if I was staying in this discussion. I guess I'll probably.
Okay. Um, motion is on the table.
What laws are you saying about this?
Six sixty-four fourteen.
Can you operate?
Six sixty-four fourteen requires disclosure of who is electioneering, advocating for the direct election or defeat of a candidate.
And I haven't seen any of this stuff, so what?
Uh, there's a website, supportnewfields.com, there are signs all around town advocating for this. They, there is no indication on these of who is behind it, who would provide the, the money for these signs or this website. Uh, again, signs should be removed, in my opinion, under six sixty-four fourteen. And the website should come down and I, as I said, it's my opinion that Jane should actively denounce this and request that that website be taken down.
I mean, it's, it's, doesn't sound like she has anything to do with it.
That's irregardless, it's a violation of a law.
So what's on this website?
I have it. Just says, you know, support new fields on March fourteenth, twenty-three, three, vote for Jane Walsh in terms of Allison, I'm sure she's a little. Not going to read all of it, it's pretty.
It's pretty what?
It's pretty exceptional, there's a lot, there's a lot here. There's, I could read it for ten minutes.
The fact is.
Cause a lot of mine is just, it's advocating for a candidate. And when you do that, you have to disclose who is funding it. Who's behind the website, who's behind the message? If it was just a general support, you know, I don't know, whatever, uh, clean roads or, you know, good roads, then that doesn't matter. But when you're advocating directly for a candidate, you have to disclose the funding source and who's funding it. That's why it's illegal.
Seems a little bit like free speech to me.
It's not, it's electioneering.
It's, it's actually a direct violation of the election statutes.
Well, I'd like to read them myself before.
The problem is, is that we have an election in seven days. In order for this board to take action, we would have to then post a new meeting and attend that meeting.
Well, I'm not comfortable making a decision without understanding the laws myself.
This, it's a clear violation of the election laws and, and actually, remember this board, you're responsible for upholding the election laws in this town whenever we have elections. Uh, I, I don't know what to say. It is a straight violation of the election, violation of the laws. The attorney general just put out information actually condemning this type of acting across the state. Uh, that's why I'm making a motion. Uh, under six sixty-four seventeen, uh, it is the police department that actually has the authority to remove them. I think it's appropriate for this board to take action tonight to request that the police department remove these signs.
Where are the signs I haven't seen, I haven't seen any of them? They're all over town, where are they?
Uh, I, I've seen them up on one way, but people have informed me that they're in a variety of places around town.
I mean, I think it's a sticky subject and I, again, I would like to read the election laws myself since this is something that I haven't had a chance to look at. And I would like to be able to make an informed decision on it.
And so, so what you're saying is you don't want to take action until our next meeting on this.
I'm saying I would like time to, before we start accusing people of doing illegal things, at least have a minute to read.
The attorney general has indicated that this is illegal action.
This specific action?
Yes.
You checked through the attorney general about it?
The attorney general put out a press release today indicating five towns that they have received complaints about this being one of them.
Since last night? Interesting.
Since this morning when they appeared. So again, I am making the motion to instruct the police to remove these signs.
I don't think I can support that motion.
All right, it's unfortunate, when you took this office, when you became an officer of this town, you took an oath to uphold the state and federal laws. This is a violation of the federal laws. It is a timing question, given that the election is seven days out and this illegal activity is taking place. I, you know, this is not upholding the law, this is upholding an agenda. I think it is very clear that this is a violation of the law. You're an election official in this town, as a member of the select board, you should understand the law. It, the attorney general has indicated this is violation of the law. What can I say?
Do you have a copy of the press release?
You can look it up yourself on the attorney general's website. Here, I, hold on, I, I can read it to you right here. It refers to a variety of, of, uh, towns and town, town elections that have, uh, to perceive complaints about. In Newfield, an unidentified party has published a website, supporting new, supportnewfields.com and placed signs in town opposing the candidacy of an individual running for select board. The website and signs violate RSA six sixty-four fourteen, the election law unit is continuing to investigate.
So is it sixty-four fourteen or sixty-four seventeen?
Six sixty-four fourteen is the violation. Six sixty-four seventeen is the statute that designates the law enforcement personnel in town with the authority to remove these signs.
Okay.
So one last time, I will reiterate my motion to instruct the police department to pull these signs and if they see them reappear, continue to pull these signs under six sixty-four fourteen and six sixty-four seventeen.
I mean, I guess that's like enough then.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you. Any other business to come before tonight? All right, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. If you're in at seven thirty-six.
Seven thirty-six.